Important people are here. We have on the agenda opened the meeting to the public, but I've never really seen that.
I don't think that should be there.
So I'd like to delete that for future meetings. Normally, we don't have it open.
That's right. That's correct. Yes.
So move, have a motion to approve the minutes from August fifteenth.
So move.
All in favor or any discussion?
No discussion.
Okay, all in favor.
Aye.
Okay. The motion has been approved. We're going to talk about the food ordinance.
Yep.
I have been getting a few comments with people like, what are we doing?
I received the same.
Yeah.
Understand.
I, you know, my response, you know, has been generally that, you know, we took, you know, the comments that were given at the public hearing and things to that. All this, we were able to integrate them in.
What, what you have, I think you have, I have the revision of June nine twenty-two, which I think is the final, the one that we went over.
Yeah. Yes, and I think there was only one question that came up.
Minor thing.
Correct. It was merely, again, it was a few language as far as pieces, but the only thing that keeps recirculating is the grandfather.
Grandfather.
Right? So that, and again, I thought that we were going to add something in there because we don't want to obviously add undue stress to businesses that are food vendors that have been out there for many years to turn around and not be at least included because although we're updating the ordinance, how is it that it's been this way? Again, I don't want to throw names out, but you know, a certain hot dog vendor that's been around forever. Um, you, you know, how do they have to turn around and follow so many different rules that have, again, they've been in place, they've established themselves. And the majority of those are on private property anyway, so I don't think it's going to really affect him anyhow. But again, there should be at least a little bit of variance there for, for somebody that is coming in, that's been doing the job and been in there for, for many years. Yeah, again, obviously they're not violating by being on a city street. They're not, you know, excluded or exclusive because, well, we've been here forever. They're not really doing anything outside the scope of it. Um, I think really the scope of the, the ordinance kind of covers more or less if you're on a street, if you're near another restaurant, if you're near another food vendor, where none of those things fit that I can think of of anybody else that's out there right now. So I don't think there's going to be much grandfathering, but I don't, I don't know if there's any way to, you know, again, try to, try to add a line in there that people that are, there are, you know, current parties excluded, or I don't know if there is a way, if it's, if there is not a way to say that.
What I would suggest we do is it's on the agenda for tonight's public, to put it on as a public hearing. And we might want to bring up the subject at that point to see if there's any.
If there's any further discussion of it, and if not.
And I know that's one of the things that, well, Kevin Arrow was discussing.
Correct.
There's the other thing about, you know, is there going to be any, any length of time that it's grandfathered, you know, is it forever?
And even still, I'm trying to think of one in particular, is there any particular business that I can think of now, food vendor wise, that it falls under the ordinance? I don't really know. I, I don't, I'm trying to think of where you're talking about them being too close to, to other restaurants or businesses. Where, where are they that they're on city property?
Yeah.
Most of these don't fit the criteria regardless, so I don't really know if it's going to actually be an issue.
The only caveat would be is someone who is, has been doing this for a while and decides to move location, that might be an issue, even if it was just for, you know, a temporary move. That could be an issue of someone who's been doing it for ten, fifteen, twenty years.
Yep.
You know, that, that's the only thing that I see that might be a problem.
So then, again, I don't know if it has to be really added in there, but obviously there's still a form of discretion. I mean, hey, listen, this is only a temporary, you know, variance here that, you know, I, I almost, do we want to add something to the language that kind of locks things in? Or do we leave it a little bit more open so that there is a little bit of room for discretion?
Leave it a little vague?
Well, that's, I, I think if we start to hone in and make too many stipulations, I think we almost kind of hurt that. Like you said, the guys getting his driveway redone, or you know, the private parking lots being redone, and he's displaced for two months.
Yeah.
Can we allow for that, that two months placement, as long as he doesn't violate the new rules?
Yeah.
Is he still okay? I'm going to say that, yeah, I think it would be reasonable.
Yeah.
So can we go back to the section on badges? We're basically deleting all of that.
Yeah, that, that whole thing was.
So do we need to change, do we need to then change? So we've got fifty-eight dash six for the license fee and duration. Do we need to change, we just like delete fifty-eight dash seven or adjust the?
I think it's just adjusted number.
Yeah, so.
Mine is deleted.
Yeah, the whole section is deleted, but this.
Oh, the number.
Yeah.
Yeah, the number itself is still, yeah, it doesn't want in succession.
Heather, can you, you know, clean that up a little bit, or? So it would go six and then seven would be the
Exhibition.
Exhibition of licenses.
Yeah. And so on.
So on and so forth.
Yeah.
Good point.
So badges was a big thing. Fees. Can we talk about the fees a little bit? I think we, did they seem to be any?
We left the fees. As you see, the license fee shall be reduced to an amount determined by the city council. We did that purposely.
Yeah.
So that the city council had control of the fees on an ongoing basis.
Right, so there wasn't a lock-in number.
So we didn't have a number that had, you know.
We determined that a hundred dollars, or let's just say a hundred and fifty dollars a year was unreasonable or was much too low, given, you know, the current climates, you know, whatever it is. Um, it varies obviously city to city, but then it would allow you guys as far as a little bit more le, uh, leverage to be able to say, okay, well, given, given where we're at, you know, we should probably raise the fees, they've been stagnant for the last two years. Instead of rewriting the ordinance, a matter of bringing it back yearly to say, is this still a reasonable fee?
Alright.
That's why we left it that way, to leave it open for the city council.
Right, so we would need to make sure that it's on the agenda.
At some point.
The fee will be effective, are we looking at March first of twenty twenty-three is sort of the implementation?
We're pretty much done with food, food vendors.
I'm just saying if we're good, when we have on the agenda to move the ordinance after the public hearing, if we could also put what the fee is effective March first, does that make sense?
So the ordinance goes into effect thirty days after it's passed.
No, I think what I'm, what we're trying to say is we don't want to have a number in there.
Yeah.
Right, it would, it would be a separate agenda item, you know, for the
For the city council.
The city council.
Yeah, for city council to make the determination.
You're just saying do it at the same time.
Yep.
Right, yeah, which makes sense, yeah. Yeah.
And then we don't leave it open to turn around and have to bring back the agenda again, just to say this is
What is the fee this year?
Right. And I almost would like to, you know, it'll be on the city council agenda. So be those date, March first, expiring last, why are we, why don't we do January first? I mean, why is it, why not a calendar year?
I'm not sure where the March first came from.
I don't know what the
Good, if we don't know, then let's
I, I just think. I mean, it's more reasonable, yeah.
Yeah, do a calendar year, which makes more sense.
So that would be.
And really you're outside of your vending times for the most part anyway. I mean,
Right.
Again, January, December, you're pretty much expiring and you're not going to start again, I know.
I can do that.
Okay, so it would be beginning January first and expire the last day of December.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, just for discussion, what, we're looking at a hundred dollars as a fee? And that would almost come in line, so this gets on the agenda in, now it's probably going to be November. You say thirty days, it goes into, I think, oh, almost
I was going to say pretty much roll right into the January one issue.
So the, the underlining language there, can we talk about that one more time?
Sure. This actually came, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Sergeant, from the chief. I mean, we worked on it together, but I think the chief came up with the actual language.
Yeah, because it does, so when it says a particular location for at least, there's a blank number there consecutive years, if we're going to be putting this before a public hearing, we need to put
There, there should be some numbers in.
Yeah.
So yes, so it really, I think the idea again, or the spirit was, do we have anyone or is there anyone that is currently acting as a food vendor, but is already in violation of this ordinance? Because if they've been a food vendor in the same location for the last five, two, seven years, what's a reasonable number to say that this person's been doing this for two or three years, but now they're within that five hundred feet? That now they've become technically in violation of the ordinance, which is why they're, essentially, this is the, a little bit of the grandfathering kind of right here in, in, in the language.
That's what it is, yeah.
So this really is kind of allowing for, but what, again, what is reasonable as far as for consecutive years?
Um, are there current, I guess, maybe that would help if we knew if there are any vendors currently that are within that.
Well, there's one. We know there's one. At least. And that's Kurt, might as well say, that's what we're talking about.
It was, and, and again, because him and his wife have two separate locations, but there are, one of them is close to another restaurant, so as far as it, but really, what, what like product is it selling? I mean, does he, is he violating with Wendy's or?
Oh.
Applebee's?
But that's also on private property.
That's also on private property.
Down on the corner.
Correct, so again, it, it is, but it's not, but his concern, again, at the time, the chief was more concerned that we wouldn't want to turn around and have, you know, an icon who's been there for a long, long time and has done this business for a while, everybody, if you say it, most people know in Torrington, if you're in for a hot dog, those are one of your locations. Um, so we didn't want to deter him from not being able to still be able to vend in the same locations that they have, just because this ordinance may not, or may apply to it. So again, the language is there, but I don't know of anyone besides that, besides Kurt, I don't, Vic, can you think of anybody?
No, that's what I'm thinking, that's what I'm saying, I think we The only other one would be, what about, what's his name? Is it, is it Charlie? Uh, hot dog guy over on North
Norwood Street.
Yeah, in the corner, Charlie, right?
Again, I don't, yeah, what else is selling another light product that's a
Yeah, no, that's what I'm thinking, but I mean, he's, he's been there for a little while now.
Oh, yeah, he's been there for, oh gosh, he's got to be there for at least two or three years.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I mean, he's been here a little while.
So again, do you just say a two-year consecutive because at least it's a reasonable number? Again, we would catch something else outside the ordinance, but once this ordinance is enacted, then we kind of have to stick more into that.
Fill in the blanks and come up to some, so five hundred feet, so you're saying from where hot dog stand is at my roulette sibley across is Applebee's, that's more than five hundred.
That's more than five hundred.
And then the other one would be, I don't think they sell hot dogs, is Wendy's.
Yeah.
So I don't really think it's an issue for that.
Again, I don't, I don't believe so either, but
It's an issue for Kurt's, because my understanding is there's a Cumberland Farm store across the street. Sells hot dogs.
Where?
Oh, yes.
On the corner, right?
On Pine Wood Road, I've seen, I've seen the plans for it, it's going to be a large, I don't know if it's Cumberland, but there's a large convenience store and a very large gas station going there.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it is a
That's why this comes up.
It is a pretty large piece of property that they're going to
So if he's occupied the particular location for at least two, I, I mean, let's do it for two years.
Years. Yeah, I was going to say two years.
Because at least then you have consistency, but at least then, again, the odds of us, we would catch, I think, anything else that would be out there. We know most of the, again, we know most of our food vendors as it is already, I just don't want to deter, you know, longstanding people that have been doing this a long time, I think that was the chief's biggest concern as well.
Appreciate it, and then this, as it comes down to the last sentence.
That's filling in the
Whatever the section.
The section, correct, that's just a subsection of where it fits.
And I think we'll figure that out and see what it is. Mr. Redd.
Can I ask?
Right, right.
So what happens if a vendor is there, so in Kurt's situation? And after the ordinance is in effect? And he's been there a couple, two, three years, and they build something next door.
That's what's happening, I think.
That's just it, and that would allow him a variance here as far as that it would grandfather this, because as long as he maintains his permit yearly, he wouldn't have to change locations, although it falls outside the ordinance, as long as he stays current. Obviously, you still have the, the right to vendor permit as far as through the health department that you have your, your permitting, then you're okay, you can, you don't have to move, but if you lose that for any reason.
But your language is he was permitted prior to the enactment of the ordinance. So after the ordinance is enacted, you have a vendor.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
A spot is there for a couple of years, and somebody wants to build a brick and mortar across the street.
So as far as not, not just from the enactment of this ordinance.
Yeah, 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 so permitted, which, we don't have a permit system right now, we're creating one, so Kurt never had a permit for two years, or any of the years.
Who hasn't?
No, no, but I mean, according to the way it's written.
He's not permitted under this.
Yes, not under this ordinance, because it does get his yearly
Right.
And the health, yeah, he does our normal vendor permit that we get for us, so he does get permitted, it's just a different style of permit, it's not a food ordinance vendor.
I will put something in there. permitted prior to the enactment of this ordinance, or prior to the establishment of this ordinance, or something.
Maybe, but maybe you don't want to take care of those kind of people. Maybe you want to just leave it to someone who's been permitted under the ordinance, somebody comes along later on.
Then they have to follow the rules.
Maybe it just doesn't apply to them.
So if they've been at a, at a location, so after the ordinance is passed, you have a vendor that comes in, he
He does it
Stakes out three years, he's been there three years. And somebody builds across the street that sells.
Maybe a
Same, like
So you're going to then revoke his permit?
No.
No.
Yeah.
Revoke his license?
No.
He just can't be on that spot.
He's grand, no, he's grandfathered.
No, no, he, no, that's what he's, that's what he's saying.
Right.
I would say he wouldn't be qualified for a permit, because he's, he's in violation of the food ordinance.
So the brick and mortar takes a, a little bit more, more priority.
Yeah.
No, I mean, I understand that, it's just that
Yeah. Yeah.
It's going to come up.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it depends on how you want to
So why, where did we come up with the five hundred feet?
That was the, that was actually some of the, that was actually splitting out, because New Haven's actually two hundred and fifty feet, so we used other cities to determine like a, at least a reasonable distance, five hundred feet's only like two small city blocks, it's not two hundred and fifty feet is really short, like, I mean, it is not allowing you much movement at all. Um, so again, the chief wanted to allow a little bit more of a, a little bit of a leeway, because, okay.
Bad dog, too, right?
Because they have Well, they have food trucks there, but that's on private
That's on their property.
That's again, that's on private property, so we're, we, we have a little bit of a mixed use, because we're thinking of it all food trucks, but the majority of our food trucks right now tend to stay on private property, because that's what we've directed them, and we made sure that, hey, listen, technically, until we get something in place, there isn't any vending on the city streets, and there's definitely no vending on state streets, period, even after this ordinance.
Right.
So they're, and they're very clear on theirs, they do not
No vending.
They, you cannot vend anything on any state road. Um, they are huge, they had, they will throw the statute right at you, there's a clear statute that says you will not vend any type of item or product on a city or on a state road. So.
You know what, my thought is that there's going to be, as you go along, there's going to be things that come up.
Yeah.
That's going to require changes, that it's either going to work or it's not going to work, and there's, there's no reason why it can't be revisited in the future.
Modify. Amend it, amend it down the line, because we realized that maybe, hey, there's more people here than not, but hopefully we don't run into that very often.
I just think that we have to expect that there's going to be some things that we're not going to think about. Yeah, maybe we have to come back and do it again or something, I don't know.
But there is an appeal system, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so I mean, that might help take care of some of those things.
Yeah.
If you, right, you know what, I mean, you know.
So let's keep the two years consecutive, are we comfortable with the two years?
Yeah, I think that's
And then we'll, you know, put the correct section of the charter in there. Before it actually goes to public hearing.
And then we'll have another public hearing, maybe other things that come up there.
Right.
But this version took care of everything, almost everything except for the grandfathering that was brought up at the first public hearing. And there weren't a lot of, weren't a lot of things that we weren't able to address.
So I almost feel in order to move this along, do we want to make a motion to approve the food ordinance as amended?
Yeah. Yes.
And move it to the
Yeah. Yeah, recommend that it gets moved to public here.
Sure.
You're making the motion?
Yes. Yes. So I made the motion, is that good?
Heather, is that good? I guess I'll have to second it.
Yes.
All in favor? Any further discussion?
No.
And approve. Alright, and that's item on the agenda. You, Drew.
Starbitch.
Hey, coverage it, never doubt. So at our last meeting, I interpreted it correctly, it was incurred that article one and two were fine, it was article three, which was the entirely new article. Basically, making recycling mandatory.
So I remember when we had talked about this, we're going to make sure, because you've got so much new language in this.
Right.
So this is basically, do we want to look at this as a full new ordinance? You're changing the title anyway.
So as a replacement?
Yes.
Replacement.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's a wholesale replacement.
Delete, you know, rather than, so remember you tried to do that in one of the variations of this, if we could just say we're, you know, deleting what's the article?
One twenty-eight.
Yes, one twenty-eight.
Yes, it would be deleting, yeah, garbage, rubbish and refuse.
Right.
Chapter one twenty-eight.
And replacing
In its entirety and replacing it.
Can we do that?
Sure. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we could do that. We're allowed.
Then to me, then you don't have to put the old language in, it's fine. So the replacement, you know, and we're agreeable on the definitions, which you have given to us before. So in this depositing litter, and we have one twenty-eight, too, at this point.
Yeah, so, yeah, litter, littering and dumping. Yeah, part of that, all the definitions then came to the forefront, as opposed to being spread out through the articles.
Right.
And there were some new definitions.
So you've spent a lot of time on this, can you think probably what's going to get the most attention is is the piece, you know.
Is the piece.
Right. You agree that?
Yeah.
I mean, you've had a chance to look at the language a lot more than
No, I think you're right, this can be right.
Which, and if you remember how many years ago, we made very light public hearing.
Where would that, where is that rate?
So the way we did it, kind of similar to the food ordinance, there are several fees throughout it. Is bulky waste collection fee, bulky waste permit fee, sanitation fee. Article four kind of lists the four fees that we're looking at. The automated refuse container fee. Which, if you recall, the city council approved increasing that this year to two hundred and fifty dollars. So that's, and if somebody wants a second container.
Yeah.
I think to Vic, maybe we need to get on the right page here.
Yeah.
You know, we've got one twenty-eight dash four three, those are the penalties.
You're in the one twenty-eights, and he's actually in the article.
Yeah, article four, one twenty-eight, twenty-eight.
Way down.
Article four.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, keep going, we're going to get the article four.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Now this is a very short ordinance.
Yep, keep going, one more. Should be the last page.
The missing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just looking at, why are we doing this on the penalties?
There you go. At least you're writing in the right area.
If we're going to delete that whole section, then where you have, I'm not section twenty-eight dash twenty-seven of article, it's the article
Right, three.
Do we really need to do all those pass outs again?
No, we don't, that was, we wanted to discuss that article, so if we're going to do that, just if we're agreeing to the language, because the cross outs reflect either changes in statutes or
A lot of them was, was just moving, right?
Was moving a lot of stuff to consolidate it into the different respective articles.
Somebody's going to say what's new and what's not, no, I gotta, you gotta think ahead of this.
I know, that's why I was trying to like eliminate the entire
Yeah, maybe it's better. Maybe it's better to try to show what exists currently.
Right, and that's what we did the first round, and there was a lot of
Yeah.
Red additions that were moved, they weren't necessarily additions, but there were changes to the way the ordinance is written as it was, or as it is now. And then there were a lot of strikeouts, and then there were a lot of additions, and as we were progressing, we were thinking, we kind of wanted to kind of clean that up a little bit. Um, but we can go back to that where yes, if you go back to like the first one, I mean, half of it's red, because it's changed.
That's what I mean, I remember that, and I remember you also, I thought, had done a summary, or was I imagining that? Yeah, so the summary highlighted, I felt like larger
The significant changes, yeah. We're talking about, I mean, the fees were obviously on that article four, twenty-one, twenty-eight, twenty-eight. They were kind of just, some are kind of in there, some aren't. But consolidating it, so there was, to say, these are the fees that the council can impose, or whatever service. That's what article four really is.
Is it a good idea to say these are the major changes? This is what we want to do?
Yeah, we
The major change here fees.
An executive summary as to what, you know, the significant changes.
Everything else is the same.
You know, I mean, we moved the definitions, is that a significant change?
Right.
Yeah, right, so we, you know, we added, you know, a dozen more definitions.
And you updated the definition.
And we updated the definitions to more current language, we
Which is not
Gender neutral.
Right.
Right, and that's not that important either, so, so maybe the thing is to do an executive summary to say, is it's a, it's a long statute, long ordinance. These are the major changes that we're recommending, fees, whatever else you think is important.
Like I remember that summary, you do you have your hands on that?
I don't.
It's too much paper, but
It's a lot of paper.
I mean, that's why I was initially recommending that we just eliminate that section. Whatever, whatever it was called before.
Garbage, rubbish and refuse.
Right, and we are now replacing the entire ordinance with solid waste. You know, which in his executive summary can put, you know, that updated, you know, the
This is really the old one, you know, the old ordinance, but we're updating it into the new. This is really the old one, you know, the old ordinance, but we're updating it into the new.
Right.
New one.
And what's significant in this change are the fees that, which I think is what people are gonna come to talk about.
Yeah, I think that's gonna be your biggest.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it's always, is going to be.
Of course it is.
The biggest thing. You know, we did change our standard sized container. As opposed from a ninety-six to a sixty-four.
Right.
You know, that was a discussion that was had. You know, but still having the opportunity. So if somebody had a sixty-four, they couldn't get another ninety-six, they had to get to a ninety-six first. And then if they needed a second one, then they'd get another ninety-six.
So that would be in your summary, that, you know, another, another change is the size.
Size of the container.
Size of the container. And that is that establishment of these fees.
You know, more clarity in definitions of what's recyclable material. What's construction and demolition debris, what's hazardous waste? So that was, you know, a lot more in, in the definitions, you know, just trying to be more kind of putting it out there. You know, we get things like, you know, why can't I put my smoke detector in the recycle bin? Or because it's, I mean, technically it's recyclable. But you gotta ship it to Kid or you gotta, you know, Fire-X or somebody, you know, to get it recycled. But, so it ends up in trash. So that, you know, going that route makes sense. Like, you know, distribution of handbills is, and I don't know how much that's a huge issue, is, but we, you know, and you probably, you know, you, you stop somewhere and you come out and there's flyers on your window. And you as a responsible person would take it, put it in your car when you get the address. But people throw it on the ground. And that's part of littering. So we added, you know, distribution of handbills.
So another, another.
Or, you know, people, you know, shoving stuff in your face, you know, your face when you're walking down the street.
Those campaign flyers.
Well, you go door to door on those, yeah, right? So you, you're handing that, and if somebody takes it, they're taking it willingly.
But you put it on their doorknob. Oh, okay. So.
So we can do that.
Are the things that should be in the executive summary.
So we can do that as an executive summary, talk about.
That might be a way to do it.
Very changes in definitions, what the, you know, what the fees look like. And, and all the fees are established such that the city council approves the fees on an annual basis. But along the same lines is that we would come to you in either late December, or, you know, late December, and recommend that these fees be for the next fiscal, we make fiscal year. I mean, particularly because some of these significantly impact the budget process.
So, one of the questions I can just see the public coming, and I know as a, as a homeowner, what are you considering for fees?
Well, so in, for the automated refuse container fee, we already, we set that, when we anticipate changing that, that's, was set by the council at $250. But it would be something, when we had our discussion, I would come to the council with the recommendation. And if it were, you know, if it doesn't change, then the recommendation is, don't change it. You leave it at two fifty.
We're also reducing, reducing the size of the containers too, right?
Correct.
In this, if I remember correctly, were we going with what, sixty-four?
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four, yeah.
It isn't our intent to go out and you know, repo thirteen thousand ninety-six gallon containers. But as they reach the end of use of life, or they get damaged, they get destroyed, then the individual would get reissued at sixty-four. Versus a ninety-six.
So the bulky waste fee, we don't have.
The bulky waste permit fee, we don't, that's where, right now is zero.
Zero.
Zero. We are still probably seeing, I mean, the, the tonnage that we're taking in now, since we actually have the application and the permit has been reduced. But we're still seeing an insurbanate amount of return calls for the same property over and over and over again. Yep. So I kind of think it like, from my perspective, so if I wanted to do it twice a year, we'd get a permit, pay my, so I'm thinking seventy-five dollars. The, what had come up is that we would.
For time?
For time.
For the first two, who say, because the discussion had come up, and I think Paul had brought it up. So maybe you give them one free, or two free, but anything after that is a fee.
Seventy-five seems, I mean, I hate to say it, but it's for a bulky, you know, that could be like three lawn chairs, you know, that aren't even worth.
Right, but this, so that's kind of what we're trying to discourage, is somebody putting out.
Three lawn chairs.
Three lawn chairs. And then we, we have, our hauler has to send out a truck and their crew, and we, and we pay for that.
Right.
Time and time and time again. The way that I would envision it is that, you know, some people have the option, there might be people that don't have the option, to, you know, kind of stock up what they want to get rid of. And then they call every three months or six months. I mean, I do mine a year, once a year. And they put everything out there. And then on the next, within a couple of days, I go, I get my permit, pay my fee, and then within a few days, they come back.
We're gonna, that's gonna receive some interesting feedback, some of which I can hear in my head.
We gotta be the only one that doesn't charge anything, though. Everybody charged for something.
We also have one of the highest taxes.
I'm talking even high tax places, they'll charge for bulky ways.
I don't know the comparison, but I think the compare, you need to be prepared to show that.
Yeah.
You know, I don't want to just say it and not have any.
Well, I like, because I'm, I can tell you from experience, I mean, Middletown has a very similar mill rate.
Yeah.
And we pay. So the process that that went through is you got, I think when we first moved there, you had two collections free. Then it went to one collection free. Then you had, you got two a year, but it was fifty dollars. Then went to seventy-five dollars, and you can call as much as you want. And get as many permits as you want.
At seventy-five dollars.
At seventy-five dollars.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, you gotta remember, we're going from zero.
No, and, and that's where we're thinking, you know, it, you maybe have to incrementalize it.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And that's where we're, you know, when Paul brought up, well, maybe you give him, you know, two a year for free.
Yeah.
And then if you need a third one, you're gonna have to pay for it.
I mean, even say one.
I mean, how much bulky waste, you know, because you want to discourage the people from the three lawn chairs.
Yeah.
Because they want to get rid of three lawn.
And you also wanted to discourage the illegal dumping, basically, that's going on. Because that's where a lot of the bulky, you know, the, the bulky waste, there's a lot of the bulky waste is not coming from that particular house. Because, you know, you know, there's a lot of that that happens in Torrance. And so, so everybody else, all taxpayers are paying for somebody who, who's not a Torrance resident to take care of their waste.
Unfortunately, we have a lot of two families, and again, just being on patrol for as long as they have, the two families definitely draw, well, multifamilies, I don't see just two families. The multifamilies are a difficult task, because you have people that turn around and move, so they're, they've been a long-term tenant for three or four years. Think about what you collect over three or four years. You move out, well, now you just, you know, the landlord says, we'll clean all your stuff out. They turn around and walk away, and they took a quarter of what they actually had. Well, now the landlord's stuck with trying to discard all that other stuff.
Yeah.
And that happens a lot more often. You see these constant change outs of furniture, and people, they're like, well, well, yeah, this guy just left all of his stuff.
It'd be cheaper for them.
My problem is, I don't think the residents should have to pay for that. No, I, you know, I mean, you, you know, if his tenant leaves and leaves, then half a house full of stuff.
Then he should get a dumpster.
Then he should get a dumpster.
Then it's, then it's his responsibility to take care of it.
Yeah, I mean, multiple furniture in front of different homes or two or three family houses, you know, where I'm like, get a freaking dumpster.
That's a little, and that should be on the landlord. That should be, that should not be the city's burden.
Yeah, with these fees, you know, I don't know, I, I think they've got to really think through what this is going to be. I really appreciate the work, but I think we're bringing up questions that we know. So how do you prepare yourself for it? You know, and I think to Armand's point, you know, if other, and your point about Middletown, we need to have some data.
Yeah.
You know, particularly with the mill rate, the size.
Yeah, and you, what you, you know, you experienced is a lot of, like, smaller towns have transfer stations.
Right.
So you can bring it there, and that's part of our.
Bring him there at any point.
Strategy and plan is, is redeveloping our transfer station to expand the availability for residents to actually, you know, get an annual transfer station pass. Pass. And then they can bring, you know, what they want.
Yeah, they physically.
And it eliminates curbside. So we're looking at a mattress program, right, so where residents can bring the mattresses. If they don't want to pay for the permit, they can bring it down there. So.
So that's an, actually, that's not a bad alternative.
You can bring it down there, you know, you'll say it's a fifty dollar trans, annual transfer station fee. You can bring it there.
You gotta bring it.
But you gotta bring it.
Yeah.
And then therefore, we're not paying for curbside collection.
Yeah, because that's expensive.
It's very expensive.
The labor, I mean, that's, that's not fifty bucks. That's, that's more than fifty bucks.
Yeah.
You know, you know what I mean?
This is gonna be your first public hearing.
I know, believe me, I know.
So controversial. I mean, I've just found a conversation.
Oh, no, no, I, I agree. Absolutely agree.
Right, so.
Drew needs to be prepared.
Yeah, the cost, like, so like, the cost of a pickup, an average cost of a pickup should be in there. So what does it cost for a city to get a truck? To, you know what I'm saying? And, and, and the labor and the cost of the truck to just pick up one site. You know.
Picks it up now.
USA.
USA, USA does. But I'm just saying, we, we pay a contractor to do that.
We pay a monthly fee for collection, and then we pay the fee for disposal at ninety-five dollars.
But not for each, you know, each pickup. So when they.
We make by the ton.
Right.
So, but, so like metals, so we pick up, so somebody puts out a refrigerator. That's twenty-five dollars. We pay that on a per-piece basis. Somebody puts out a washer and dryer, that's fifty dollars. That's what we pay, because it's a per-piece unit.
Right.
Well, I think, you know, to your credit, I mean, what you're doing now in terms of having people, you know, begin to change behavior.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, why I'm thinking of it on an incremental basis.
Yeah.
So even like the bulky waste permit fee, if it's, you know, I mean, two, three a year, to me is reasonable.
Right.
You know?
That's more than reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, I would.
Comparatively.
You know, apparently, you know, you know, where we are today versus, you know, I mean, I personally, it's your trash, it's your waste, you should pay for it. And if you're paying for it, then the general taxpayer is not paying for it. Now, you councilman probably don't generate a lot of bulky waste. But maybe you do, I don't know, maybe you don't, I don't know, but I'll guarantee you, there's, yeah, right, the three chair.
You know, you don't want to clutter.
But, um.
I think that's, I think that's a big part of it. You're right. But again, my, like, again, my, my grandparents or other, that don't want anything in their house, and the minute they get one, one thing, hey, this lawn chair isn't any good. He is definitely not going to hold on to that. My grandfather was not holding on to something for three months, waiting for his, you know, bi-annual pickup. But again, that's, is that, is that the norm, or is that a few and far between?
Right.
I think it's gonna be more than norm, you know, I particularly, now, there's a lot of smaller homes.
Smash it up and put it in the, in the trash bin.
Yeah, I know. That's, that, I mean, that's what I think.
I have a bad shoulder. Alright, we can go on and on, but I think as prepared as you can be, we're not ready for a public hearing on this yet, are we?
I think we need numbers.
I don't, I don't think we are. One is, I'm not likely going to be here the fourteenth. And I think you have it on your.
Yeah, she put it on.
Just in case.
No, no, and, and, yeah, I understood that.
We're not having a public hearing without you.
I could zoom in.
So how about for the next ordinance committee, if you could.
I can.
Give us an executive.
Yeah, I can prepare the executive summary, and then, you know, kind of think about what we want for the fees.
In the comparative, you know, towns with similar.
So the big one, the fee, the refuse collector registration fee, is we already do that.
Yeah.
This was just more bringing it out. This is the fee we charge. And that's a fee to the haulers. The people that operate in town. So like USA, Payne, CWP, PM, anybody that wants to pick up trash, even if it's from a business, has to be registered in town. That's by state statute. So then we, we set whatever that annual permit fee is, registration fee. The sanitation service fee. Put it in there, but that's probably not something we want to, we're not going to maybe broach at this point, because it's, it's akin to the pay as you throw.
Yeah.
Um, so if we're, say, okay, as part of, I mean, it is a revenue offset, is you generate, you know, if you were to charge every household a hundred dollars, that's one point four million dollars.
Yeah, you're not gonna be, I, I'm not sure I'd support that.
So, I mean, but it's something that, as we progress.
It's gonna have to happen, or something's gonna.
I mean, it has, we have to encourage and, you know, if we can get our recycling rates up, then it may not be that much of a burden.
Right, right. And we can get the mill rate down.
Yeah.
Alright, I think.
So if you charge a hundred dollars, you can reduce your budget by one point four million. That's one mil.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and if we can get a handle on the bulk waste too, that'll help too. You know, I mean, whether it's through fees or reduced amount, because that'll help the offset a little bit.
Alright, so I think.
We're just, you know, part of the whole, you know, the, the ultimate goal is for, it's really about education.
Yeah.
It's about changing behavior. It's about changing the way people think of, you know, recycling. And you talk about your lawn chairs. Now, I'm not sure what kind of lawn chairs you think of, but most of it is metal.
Yeah.
Which should be recycled.
Yep.
And I think you're absolutely right. It's, you know, education, also doing it strategically. You know, so it is more acceptable, I think, is, is also important.
Right, so, yeah, it was, as opposed to trying to write the ordinance over and over every couple of years.
Yeah.
As we want to try to incrementalize and implement programs.
Yep.
Alright, so there's a couple of things we've agreed upon. One is that we're eliminating the existing ordinance. We're proposing a new ordinance on bulk waste. At the next meeting, you're gonna give us an executive summary that highlights the points within the ordinance for, for our review.
Yeah, right. So what would be the, what we would see as the significant changes?
Yes.
In the ordinance.
Right.
Yeah. Alright, we're gonna move on, unless there's any other discussion to, are we doing trees now? Yes, discussion regarding the tree yard.
Trash the crews. Nice, nice, nice change, nice segue. Nice. Except the end.
That's the biggest role.
Alright. I, I think Dick wasn't here at the last meeting, and he seems fairly maybe new to.
Yeah, I was here, but I don't recall seeing the tree. Was it, did we discuss it? Sure.
It was a short.
Short discussion. It was very brief. Because we were. Maybe I was. We were talking about food and garbage.
So that's, this would be tree shop, shrubs and woody vegetation.
So it's a, just basically an ordinance to trend, you know, delineate, let people know how that's managed and to protect our urban forest and our trees, setting, you know, part of this goes with attaching a policy to it. So then also we have contractors that are doing work, so we want to protect. Now, this only applies to trees on city property. We have no jurisdiction. You know, Paul had asked if there was a way we could work something in there about controlling what people do on private property.
No, I do remember that.
Yeah.
If you could figure out how to control the food trucks on private property, we probably could figure out. No, so this is just that, you know, if somebody damages a tree, you know, so we inspected the trees on Main Street on Friday and they both carved their initials in the trees. Obviously, the, the tree can, for the most part, will probably recover, but that's, you're, you're damaging city property. And then it also talks about, you know, yard waste. Our management plan for the trees, who's responsible. You know, basically it falls on the tree wardens or deputy tree wardens, what public utilities can and can't do. Yeah, I'm the tree ward. That's my charter, yeah, my charter, right? Unless you want to change the charter.
Ray, is there, is it inclusive of the city right away? So if we have.
It is.
So if I have a motor vehicle accident and a trees, again, takes out a sign, takes out a very large, we'll say, a, you know, three foot DBH maple, as far as, is there restitution or something that would go back to the city for damaging or replacing something like that?
That's also in here too, is the recovering, if, you know, penalize and recover the cost of that tree. So that we would put a monetary value on that tree and recover that we could go after that person to recover the cost of that tree.
Now, that would, that go to the same thing for a resident. So a resident is out in, in technically the city right away, that's still city owned property. So if they were to cut down a tree without at least reaching out to you guys, then it would fall under that as well.
Yeah, and, you know, people plant, you know, so the same thing with people planting bushes or trees in the city right away.
Oh, I know.
Which may create sightline issues.
Yeah, I've cut down a bunch recently, so yes.
I mean, we had, we had an issue up on Albret Road, maybe two winters ago, where the plow took out a bush that was planted in the city right away. And, you know, they wanted us to pay them for that bush, but it should not have been in the city right away in the first place. Because you didn't, you weren't authorized to plant it there.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of problems.
Howington Road in East Maine, that is a little
island.
That's what we're talking about. So I, I do know that people have planted there, but I don't know if it's done by the.
But I mean, that's authorized. So it's, if it's unauthorized, so.
So you're at the edge of your driveway and by your mailbox, which is usually city right away. Again, it depends on the width of the roadway and there's a few variables there, but usually, again, they give the, the broad number five to ten feet off of, off the curb line is generally still the city right away, because it deals with windrows from plowing, maintenance, sightline issues, if you pulling out of your driveway, just general upkeep and maintenance. So a lot of people like planting the ornamental grasses on each side of their, their driveway or their, their mailbox, which is beautiful. We ran into one on Tornford West Creek by Baltic. Well, if you stop at Tornford West Creek and you're trying to make that left on the Baltic, you couldn't see past the grasses, the grass is in growing to be almost six and a half or seven feet tall. You couldn't see, and that's a very difficult corner to navigate, even on a good day with good sight. Well, you eliminated the entire way down to the right. So we ended up sending a letter out for a sightline issue. They whacked them right down because they were explaining it was in the city right away. So again, some people are cooperative, some people are like, just cut it down. I don't have the time or the effort. And, and we can, we can help facilitate that as well. But at least this helps manage it and, and require some fees, or if you do take something out, that if it should be green and, and be replaced, that, that's appropriate as well, seems reasonable.
I mean, we had one right here on Main Street. That the tree got hacked, killed it. Shortly after we just did the whole Main Street streetscape and you know, I mean, I mean, it was before my tenure. I mean, I did see the tree hacked, but I mean, that's, we should, need to be able to go back to that individual and say, look, I mean, you just destroyed city property, it's a city tree. We value that tree at, you know, whatever that is, whatever costs for us to replace it. I mean, depending on, also on the maturity of the tree.
So for the purpose of, we're close to our end of our, our timeline. So we have not set a, you know, a notice for a public hearing on this particular. Do you want to look at any further, Dick?
Yeah, I mean, we haven't set the hearing, so we might as well.
Yeah, they, you know, they give you an opportunity to look at it a little closer.
So we're gonna move this, it's only on the agenda currently for discussions. Move this, make sure it's on the next agenda. And as we talk about the next agenda, can we come up with a date?
Yeah.
Send out multiple emails.
Chase people now. We don't want that.
Give them more time to write a few more ordinances.
So the next council meeting is on November seventh.
It's the day before election, yeah.
So we have the fourteenth, twenty first, and then December fifth and nineteenth.
Okay, can we do it on the fourteenth?
Yeah, you want your ordinance at five thirty?
Yeah.
Public hearing on what?
I don't know if.
Food truck, yeah, public hearing. You don't know if you're gonna be there because of recovery.
God willing, creeks don't rise, yeah.
Well, we could, we could set it for the fifth and then if, if Mr. Drew's not back, then we can move it.
All right, so with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second it, and all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
So I'm gonna call this regular meeting of the City Council and WPCA order. For the record, today is Monday, October seventeen, twenty twenty-two, in the City Hall Auditorium, participating in person, I have Councilman Waldron, Councilman Manichia, Councilwoman Rowett, and I think participating via Zoom, I have Councilwoman Hona. And I think that's it. So we do have our forum. With that said, if we could please stand and place the flag.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go into our regular agenda, if I could just ask for a moment of silence and observance of the recent loss of officers Alex Hamzy and Sergeant Dustin Demonti of the Bristol Police Department. Thank you. And I'm sure all of you agree, our thoughts and prayers are with their family and with their colleagues. Moving into item number one on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public in accordance with Section four E of the City Council and WPCA meeting rules of procedure.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
Second by Councilman Manichia. All in favor? Any opposed? We're open to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to address the board at this time? Seeing and hearing that, I'm moving to item two. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Item A is a motion to accept the public hearing meeting minutes from October third, twenty twenty-two. Councilwoman Waldron, I heard, Councilwoman Hona. Are there questions on the motion or on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Item two B, I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from October third, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron. Second by Councilman Manichia. Are there questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item three, I'll entertain a motion on recommendation of the ordinance committee to schedule a public hearing for November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two for the purposes of an amendment to the food truck ordinance.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
And I'll second it and thank you for, I think we had talked about amending that date because Dick wasn't going to be here. Ray was not, Ray Drew.
Okay.
So.
Is it up in the air or do we have a date?
Right, but you're okay with having it without, I'm not always okay with that.
Yeah.
All right, Sergeant Bolt, if you're available on that day. Yes, thank you.
That's when you're supposed to say, God willing, and the creek don't rise.
My second is, is with the original motion.
Okay, so the motion stands for public hearing on November fourteenth, motion made by Councilman Waldron, second by Councilwoman Rowett. Questions or comments? Then I'll call this motion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, I'll entertain a motion on recommendation of the ordinance committee to schedule a public hearing on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two for the purposes of a hearing solid waste ordinance amendments.
I'd like to table this.
Okay.
Agenda item.
So motion to table by Councilwoman Rowett.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Manichia. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, so we'll table that until further notice. Good, okay. Item five, I'll entertain a motion to approve a two point five percent salary increase effective July one, twenty twenty-three, and a two point five percent salary increase effective July one, twenty twenty-four for the elected position of the registrar of voter and deputy registrar of voter and to tie further wage increases for these positions to the terms of the management resolution contract.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Hona. Are there questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, before I read the motion, Ed, did you see this motion as it's written on the agenda? Is this, okay, good. All right, so I will entertain a motion to approve ONG's recommendations toward bid packages to the lowest qualified responsible bidder as described in the pre-construction manager Daniel Herzler's, Hetzler, sorry about that, letter of October eleventh, twenty twenty-two and an email of October fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, as well as Ed Arum's summary received October fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. This bid package and recommendations were approved by the Board of Education and the Building Committee on October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron, and I heard a second from Councilman Manichia. And questions, Ed Arum is here if there are questions.
I think it's just the comment, you know, getting that information at three o'clock today. The amended recommendation with the, with the backup information, if there's any way, and I recognize that the committee's only met last week, but this is a lot of information, a lot of money in these contracts that we're approving tonight, so. My only comment, I will support the motion, but.
Thank you. I know, I think our timing on these meetings were just you know, they meet on a Thursday evening and City Hall is closed at noon on Friday. I think that's part of the problem that we're having. But I know that there's a tremendous amount of work that goes on with council, with the Building Committee and the Board of Ed on these. Questions, additional comments? Hearing none. I'll call this motion, all in favor? Motion carries. All right, item seven. On recommendation of the ARPA committee, I'll entertain a motion to award a contract. Now, I'm gonna read a different motion, sorry. So you can you call me out for the last minute motions too. Entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to negotiate the terms of a contract with the Northwest Regional Workforce Investment Board for a hundred and three thousand five hundred sixty-seven dollars and eighty cents and with Primetime House for seven thousand two hundred dollars to provide benefits counseling services as described in the joint memo dated October twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Thank you, Councilman Manichia.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett. And just to explain the change in the motion, obviously there simply awarding the contract is one step, but also negotiating, what are the deliverables, what are the expectations for reporting back progress reports, because this is a contract that will have transactions throughout the year. So those are the terms that Rista, Malanka, our Economic Development Director, and I will work with both WIB and Primetime.
And I think it's, it's worthy of at least Rista sort of explaining a little bit, that we only got two applications, you know, for the workforce navigator. And in review of them, you know, they both had great value. You know, to what the intent is, so do you mind?
Sure, no, not at all.
Rest of the council.
So over the past year or two years, we've been hearing a lot from our manufacturing specifically, but a lot of our businesses, not limited just to manufacturing, they're having a really hard time finding workforce. And we're also hearing that there are people who are having a hard time finding a job, and there's a lot of barriers that stand in the way of connecting the two. One, just the sheer amount of unemployment and jobs that are created, and so it's really tough to navigate that volume of jobs. But also things like transportation, childcare, education, language barriers. And one of those barriers is also, you know, people who have been on benefits and how can they get off benefits and still be able to maintain their food and electricity and all of those different things. So through this process, through the whole ARPA planning process, we heard from our manufacturing companies that they really wanted somebody to be like a matchmaker to help take a person and match them to the right job and work with their businesses to help get people into those positions that they were struggling to do. So we did an RFQ, RFP to look for this workforce navigator position. It's a one-year contracted position, so it's not a city employee, it's not a long term, it's meant to kind of fill the, the, the demand that's been created because of the pandemic. Everybody kind of back to work and then, you know, we can assess whether it's needed or not needed, but it is not meant to be long term, it's not meant to be a city position. So with the RFQ, we received two proposals. One was from the Workforce Investment Board and the one was from Primetime House. The ARPA committee, which I think you all know by now, is, members of the various boards and commissions had reviewed the written proposals, decided to interview both companies. After their interview, they felt that the Workforce Investment Board really was the company or the organization that is already doing this, build their capacity to be more targeted for Tonkin, not the whole region that they serve. But Primetime House had, you know, talked about this benefits navigator, which is a resource we don't currently have. But Primetime House had, you know, talked about this benefits navigator, which is a resource we don't currently have. And I know Christina from Primetime House is here as well, if you wanted any more information on that. So the, the committee recommended that we work with both groups to, to kind of fill the workforce navigator position and bring in this additional resource for a benefits navigator. The proposal that you have in front of you is a joint proposal where the Workforce Investment Board will work with Primetime, and I think they've committed for twenty hours per month to do that. Talking with Primetime House, there may be some additional demands that are needed for that, and we're gonna work with, with the, the ARPA committee. This is something that we'll bring back to them to, to kind of discuss a little further if there's more demand. What is that demand and how can we address it? But, but before you right now is the work for one year of a workforce navigator, which is a person hired by the Northwest Connecticut Workforce Investment Board to provide services to Torrenton businesses and Torrenton residents with a promise for twenty hours a month of benefits counseling service through the Primetime House.
Let's see executive summary.
Yeah.
Questions on what we're trying to accomplish with this workforce navigator? Or the two contractors that we've laid it on?
Thank you. You could better explain it than I could, so.
All right, if there are no questions, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all. All right, item eight, I'll entertain a motion to release the sewer lanes in Corporation Council's memo dated October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Thank you, Councilman Manichia.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Ruette. Are there questions on the list or on the memo? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the tax refunds indicated on the list dated October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll move it.
Thank you, I heard Councilwoman Ruette, and I heard Councilman Manichia. Questions on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item ten, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron, second by Councilman Manichia, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I see Dan Farley is in the room. Anything this evening from the treasurer's office? Ray, anything from Public Works? Heather, anything from the city clerk's office? I know you guys are slammed with absentee ballots and all day long, every day. Incorporated Council, anything?
Uh, nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Right. We'll move into item number eleven. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
And second by Councilman Manichia. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, starting, we'll go to the screen first. Anything this evening, Councilwoman Hona?
Thank you. I just wanted to check in regarding the letter that we all received from Yvonne Donahue regarding the grant funding for, for her Center for Dance Arts program, where she has a number of positions for students to join her dance classes, but had concerns, I'm looking at her letter now. I guess there's concerns about how quickly the funding is coming forward, because I know there's a certain timeframe that she has to use the funding, and so she kind of rushed to get the students into the classes, but then has some outlay of funding that she has to do for costuming and things like that. It was not really getting answers about how quickly the grant money would be forthcoming. Do we have any new information? I don't know if Rista's still in the room, if she has any info for it, or maybe you could shed some light on what the holdup is.
So, yes, Rista did prepare for the council members a memo. It's just talking about the process, you know, not any specific grant application then or applicant. But I think it's important for the council as the, as the the body in charge of making these decisions to understand these are federal funds. There are a lots, a lot of ins and outs about crossing, you know, crossing Ts, dotting Is, making sure that we're, making sure these funds are being granted in accordance with the US Treasury regulations, making sure that whatever we need to receive back from the grant recipients is, is certainly itemized and explained to those grant recipients, and making sure that all of the funds that are granted out are granted out consistently with the grant application. It's taking a little bit of time, particularly because we're working with our financial office, our auditors, the community foundation, their auditors, and then finally the grant recipient. So the process is a little bit time-consuming. We certainly didn't expect it to take this long. We certainly hope that with every grant award that gets handed out, we get a little bit more seasoned and experienced in how to disperse these funds quickly. I did have a meeting today with Guy Ravezzi and Julie Schornberg from the Community Foundation to go over some of those details to make sure that we're we're following all of those rules and making sure that we're getting all the documentation that we need. I think that as a new grant recipient with new grant funding, there's always a little bit of a learning curve in all of this, and I would hope that those recipients would recognize that and be patient. Is that, was that all you had this?
Yeah. Yeah, well, yeah, is that being, because I'm concerned, you know, this is one particular business owner who obviously has like a small budget and is not a big operation. But now I'm thinking more about like the community groups that got those grants and the teams and stuff. If they have some outlay of money, is it, is it being communicated to them exactly how long it's gonna take? You know, worst case scenario for them to get the money, because it seemed like, and I don't know, I'm only basing it on the letter that we received, but it seemed like they didn't, this particular grantee didn't know how long the process was gonna take. And, you know, if it was gonna take this long, maybe she would have waited and put the students in next fall if she could, rather than getting them in this year and having to outlay the money. So is that being like going forward clearly articulated to the grant recipients?
A great question, and that is one of the things that we did speak with Guy and Julie about. You know, the question I had was, was it articulated in the grant application that really ideally these should be reimbursement grants? Much like FASAD improvement grants, you go out, you expend the funds, and then you report back to us.
Right.
How those funds were expended, and then we provide the reimbursement. Some of the grant applicants tied their grant requests to a particular number of participants, you know, whether it was a tuition-based program, that there was supposed to be a certain number of participants, and that the reimbursement was on the tuition for participation. And those are the kinds of things that you really can only tell from, by utilizing a reimbursement program. You know, if the grant application said, we are anticipating thirty students to participate, but only twenty students participate, you know, obviously the reimbursement would only go to the twenty participants not funding for thirty, ten that didn't. So, so to your point, I don't believe it was clearly articulated. So for that reason, the conversations that we had earlier today were, you know, that, that a little bit of a learning curve on this one. Get these funds out as quickly as you can. I can assure you, Julie Schornberg left my office, made a phone call to Yvonne, and I think we're on our way to loosening up those funds as quickly as we can. Even, even the decision, while we were progressing and proceeding under the assumption that it was the community foundation that would be releasing these funds, paying these funds out, issuing the checks. And today's conversation with Guy and Julie revealed that their auditor did not recommend that. It kicked them into a different kind of audit. So the conversation was pushed back to the city to ask if the city could be issuing those checks. So learning curve, nobody wants to put any small business in a position where, you know, they're, they're counting on dollars and then holding their breath waiting for those dollars to show up.
Right.
We're doing the best that we can to get these out quickly.
Yeah, I think that's the thing, right?
Sure, yeah.
It's okay, go ahead. It's okay, go ahead, Ann.
So I, I think being on the committee, we wanted to make sure that those applications that the committee had approved got onto the council agenda, agenda pretty quickly for that reason. But, you know, I appreciate, you know, her concern, and, you know, these are new businesses. These are new nonprofits that are, some of them, as you know, are run by volunteers, you know, who have not really experienced, you know, grants, so. But I think we'll, we'll get through this, you know, hoop here a little bit and get the, the money flowing a little bit quicker and have a system in place, but I appreciated your letter, but we were happy that we got it on the agenda, you know, for the council to approve, knowing that, you know, some of these, you know, were really starting in September and October. So if we were saying that we needed to wait, she wouldn't have that approval to, to even get started, so.
Right.
You know, I think it's a good point.
Yeah, some, yeah, things that are tied to a school year or to a specific schedule certainly put us all in like a tighter timeframe. And I think you're exactly right, Ann, is that lots of these people and organizations and businesses have never applied for a grant or dealt with any kind of reimbursement, so it's not their world. And so I just want to make sure that, I always say in my own field, like you don't want to turn a good thing into a bad thing because the bureaucracy is too hard for people. So I just want to, you know, going forward, maybe we, we will, I'm sure we will get better at it, and that we can just really communicate to people what the worst case scenario is so that they're planning on that timeframe instead of the best case, you know.
Great.
But that's all I have. Thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
I appreciate your, your question. Councilman Waldron.
Nothing for me.
Councilman Manichia.
Nothing.
Councilwoman Ruette.
I had three things. One is congratulations to Vic for being the Italian mayor of the day. What a great selection. I'm sorry I wasn't there. Celebrated by that make dancers, and I understand your acceptance was with grace and a great deal of integrity, so congratulations. Thank you very much. Also, I, I guess my big issue with this red button is the emergency button, we sort of talked about it in our ordinance committee, because I don't think it's been used for a very long time. And when it was used, the response from what Heather's notes indicated was like fifteen minutes, sixteen minutes?
Sixteen.
So I feel like whatever system we approved, I think it was a half million dollars for the upgrade of our technical needs within the council chambers. If we could do something with that red button, that would be great. At least that was the conversation. Heather had instructed that you have to push the red button and also make a call. And I think in this, this era of, I don't want to say violence, but it's, it's really quite concerning that we don't have a, a better emergency system in place, so we can work on that. And then really just the tragedy in Bristol, I think, you know, hit home for a lot of us, you know, here in Connecticut. Actually, no, Alex Hamzy's uncle, who I served in the legislature with, just, it could happen to any community, but I think it continues to resonate, you know, how important our first responders are, and, you know, I wanted to show my appreciation. And Mayor, thank you for doing the moment of silence, Torrenton cares, so.
Thank you, Councilwoman. With that, I would, I would share with the council that I did reach out to the mayor of Bristol the morning that the news broke, just to offer any other services or support that the city might be able to lend under the circumstances. Our police department did provide some shift coverage the day after the event, and I'm quite proud of the fact that our police department was willing to step up and put in the extra time to support a community that is hurting. When you're brought to your knees like that, you realize how small a state this Connecticut is and how important it is for us to, to be there. So I appreciate your words. Moving into item twelve, I will entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public for comment on agenda items only.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
And second by Councilman Manichia. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Anybody from the public wishing to address the council on the agenda items, please? Seeing none. I would like to move into an executive session. Because there is no anticipated action coming out of the executive session, I'm gonna suggest that the clerks could shut the recording down. And I'll make notes of coming out of executive session into open session and adjournment, and let you know what those times are tomorrow. And I don't know, Ed, if you need me to sign anything today. Do you want to bring that up? And I'll sign that before we go into executive session. All right, so I need a motion. I'd like a motion to enter into an executive session according to section one dash two hundred, subsection six, subsection D regarding real estate. And if we could, please invite Corporation Counsel Vic Michelle and Public Works Director Ray Drew.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia.
Second.
And second by Councilwoman Ruette. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll go to the anteroom. Meet me in the anteroom.
Are we connecting with Carrie?
Yeah. Oh, Carrie, I'll call you in if that's all right. Can I call you on your cell phone?
Yeah. Yep, yeah, that's perfect. Thank you. I appreciate it. I'll hang up from this call.
Thank you.
Stay here.
Kick everybody out.
Yeah.
It's really bad.
Yeah.